All right, well, the time is 7:13. We'll go ahead and call our Town of Youngsville Board Commissioners regular meeting to order for September 10th. Turn things over to Commissioner Bailey, please.
Well, obviously, my name is Les. So I think we should have just a moment's silence to be appreciative of the folks, the first responders, the military, et cetera, et cetera. Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for this opportunity. Lord, we just had special blessing on all the first responders, et cetera, in our country. And Lord, we just ask that there be a meeting in our country in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion other than the train before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, agenda's approved. Next up, we have our public hearings. Item A is Consider Text Amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance to Comply with New NCGS Chapter 160D Legislation. I'll go ahead and open up the hearing to the public, and I'll ask Ms. Cordero if she has any additional comments prior to entertaining any comments from the public.
Um, just, there are a couple of sections that I wanted to draw the board's attention to. Um, the new legislation, it switched out the naming for, there were several things that were, have very similar names, like positional use permits and special use permits. So they are all now just special use permits. Several new definitions have been added to Article 3. Oaths of office are now required for anyone appointed to either the planning board or Board of Adjustment. Public hearings are now referred to as legislative hearings when referring to a hearing that solicits comments on a legislative decision. New conflict of interest provisions have been added for both planning boards and Board of Commissioners members. Clarification has been added as to what constitutes an abutting property when referring the public notice requirement. Uh, so, I mean, that's all the important stuff, otherwise it was mostly just changing up statute numbers and terminology.
Okay, and thank you for that clarification. Having said that, any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners before we open to comments from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open up for any, anybody from the public that would like to speak. The floor is now yours. Field it.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, I've got a list of the individuals that are on the call, and I'll just call them one by one, just to see if anybody wants to comment, and we'll just go by the last four digits of your phone number. So first, I've got a phone number ending in 7320.
That's me, Michael Collins, I have no comment.
Got it, okay, thank you, Michael. Next, we have a phone number ending in 7827.
Uh, no comment.
All right, and I have a caller ending in 4829. Next, I've got a caller ending in 2158.
No comment.
All right, uh, next caller is ending in 3467.
No comment.
All right, and the last caller we've got is ending in 7790.
That's me, Joe Johnson.
All right, welcome, Commissioner Johnson, I thought that was you. All right, and then that's all the callers that we have on the call, Mr. Mayor.
Well, hearing no comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:18, and move along into Item B, which is the installment financing contract to build a public works facility and run it in, refinance Town Hall. Go ahead and open the hearing to the public there. Ms. Cordero, did you have anything that you wanted to add prior to entertaining comments from the public?
I have nothing additional to add. The amount remains the same as we discussed at the last meeting.
All right, hearing that, I'll go ahead and open up comments from the public. Ms. Cordero, if you could go through the roll call and see if we have any comments.
Absolutely. So I'll call the caller whose phone number ends in 7827.
No comment.
All right, we have the next caller's phone number ending in 4829. And the next caller's number is ending in 2158.
No comment.
And I believe that's Mr. White on the phone, ending in 3467.
No comment.
All right, and that's all the callers we have on the line, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing that we have no comments from the public, I'll go ahead and close the hearing here as well, as of 7:19, and move along into citizens' comments, and I know we do have one, either online or via email. Ms. Bowden, at 23 East Franklin Street, she wanting to discuss enhanced traffic signals and enforcement along her street. So, Ms. Bowden, if you're online with us, the floor is yours.
Thank you, um, and I appreciate the time tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Cordero, for sending the report along. I live on the corner of Croft Street and Franklin Street, and it is quite a busy Croft Street, as it is a throughway for a variety of vehicles. And I know this issue has been brought up in past years, that there hasn't always been a stop sign here, and since the implementation in recent years, it is often a place where people run the stop signs. Now, contrary to the areas that the speed limit signs and active speed limit LED signs have been implemented, this is very much a neighborhood, and there, there have been increased police presence here, which is very much appreciated, and I have to, I have to say, it is, we have a wonderful police force here in Youngsville, and it's been incredible to see the reaction to those that are driving through, and the citations that have been given and the tickets as well, which is comforting, that is now known to our police force as well, that this is a problem area. But what I'm coming to this group tonight with is some sort of permanent change, so whether that is, and I, and I heard in recent conversations that speed bumps are not allowed on this road, but some sort of permanent change, whether it's LED lights on a stop sign, or in, or a traffic sign that, that has been implemented by the elementary school and on your way to US-1, I feel like this area is just as heavily trafficked and even more at risk, given the population that lives on these four corners. I'm sorry, is now exiting.
We just had a caller exit, please continue, sorry for the interruption.
Okay, thank you. Um, to conclude, you essentially are, we need some force in this neighborhood. There's a woman who's 95, there's a child who's seven months old, there are plenty of children that ride their bikes up and down this road, and I think to lessen the burden on our police force, it would be, it would be very welcome to have some sort of concrete solution, whatever that may be, whatever the town can implement, and, and that is what I hope to accomplish.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments on that, Ms. Bowden. I know myself and Mr. Cordero have been out there for a different instance, and we saw firsthand some of the issues that you're running into, so it's definitely something I'm sure we'll be following up on here in the very near future.
Wonderful, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, moving along into the financial report.
Carrie Patton-Mottler here in Youngsville, my office over at Town of Youngsville. In August of 2020, the town issued 70 checks totaling approximately $234,000. We took in 861 deposits to accounts for approximately $500,000.
Maggie Bowden is now exiting.
Um, our debt issuance right now for our vehicle loans is at?
Is now exiting.
$29,000. Our street loans are at approximately $876,000, and our Town Hall loan is just going to be paid off in the near future, is at $259,000 approximately. Um, the only big updates I have in the finance world is our audit went successfully, and our auditors were very pleased with how strongly Town of Youngsville finished the fiscal year, and they're very excited about becoming fiscal year for us. The public works and Town Hall renovation is expected to be on the October agenda with the LGC, and then we should be able to show it after. At approximately, currently, the estimate is approximately $2.77 million, but we anticipate being less than $30 million. And for capital projects, we completed and paid for the new police department's solar radar surveillance speed signs, and these considerations have been completed and payment is pending, and that is all for the financial report.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for Ms. Patton-Mottler?
I love to say colds bro so bad.
All right, hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda, and the requested action here is to approve the consent agenda as of September.
I'm ready to approve the consent.
All right, we've got a first on the table, do I hear a second? All right, first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, none opposed. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for being proactive and not coughing over the phone, thank you, sir.
Really.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You gotta have fun in life, guys, come on now. Old business, Consider Text Amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance to Comply with New North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D Legislation. The action requested here is to receive the amendment for consideration. Looks like we have already got that in front of us. Anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the amendment? All right, hearing none, we have received the amendment, and I'm assuming this will be on our agenda for next month.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Sounds good. Okay, moving along into Item 8, which is new business. Accept the resignation of Samuel Hardwick from the Youngsville ABC Board and appoint a new ABC Board Chairman. The action requested here is to accept a resignation with gratitude, I think we can all agree with that. Sam's been a longtime servant for the Town of Youngsville, via being Commissioner, being Mayor, and now serving on the ABC Board, so definitely have a lot of gratitude towards Sam, the service he's pulled with the Town of Youngsville. So, any additional comments?
For the service of the community.
All right, the next item here, we've got a void to fill, and Mr. Rick Hauser is here, and the action requested is to appoint Rick Hauser as the new ABC Board Chairman. Do I hear a motion to appoint Rick Hauser as new?
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second on the table. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
I was trying to give the options. You can ask Commissioner Johnson to check his pulse if necessary.
I must be in a bad spot, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just wanted to know if it was unanimous, or if we had any, that's all.
Unanimous.
All right, sounds good. Congratulations, Mr. Hauser. Moving along into Item B, amend the fiscal year-end 2021 fee schedule to set fees for adult softball to $55 in town and $75 out of town per participant, fees for outdoor basketball to $65 in town and $75 out of town per participant, and fees for Christmas parade registration to $50 standard and $25 nonprofit. Action requested here is to approve as recommended. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners before we entertain a motion?
I do want to just bring up a comment that came up during the Columbus meeting in regards to the feature of the Christmas parade. Some of them felt that there shouldn't be one. I went, I explained why, et cetera, et cetera, so I just want you to be aware.
Yes, sir.
You know, as a non, not necessarily about just now, but the time of year and everything that's going on, there was, there was concern.
Sure.
And that's, I supported it, but just that way.
Understood. No, that's fair. That's fair. Thank you for that. Any additional comments from the board? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, we've got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries there. Item C, Consider Approval of Agreement with DataNet AV to Procure Installation of an Audio-Video System for the Town Board's New Chamber, New Meeting Chamber. Action requested here is to direct Town Administrator to Execute Contract. Any questions from the commissioners, or any additional comments from Mr. Cordero before we entertain a motion?
I'll just describe that we went through a very thorough process to select a vendor. At first glance, there may be a bit of sticker shock when it comes to looking at this, but I think especially when it comes to a solution like this that helps engage the public in what this board does for the community, providing a means and method and facility to engage the public and allow them to participate, is very important. I didn't stage the, the audio troubles at the beginning of the meeting to justify this, but needless to say, you know, this is obviously a bit more than, I think, the $400 that I spent on that cart over there, but I think it will do great, and it will be an excellent facility that not only can be used for the board, I find oftentimes that when board chambers, meeting chambers are created, I don't want to say they're a waste, but they remain vacant a lot, because the board meets once a month usually, or twice a month, and the way that we're designing this and the way that we're configuring the room and the space is so that way it can be used for a variety of different purposes, for training with the police department, for example, for other types of, of activities, and so I think it would be, it'll be an excellent asset, and I think this firm is highly qualified. If you had a chance to look at the renderings and their qualifications and experience, I think they'll do an excellent job in partnering with the town to achieve our objectives. That's all I have, sir.
All right, any questions, comments, concerns from the board?
Will the planning board also be using this space?
Yes, ma'am. And the ABC Board's welcome to use it if they would like as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the consensus is everything's gonna be moved from here to over there.
What about the offices? And I know that doesn't really have to do with the data that we're discussing. How do those fit in?
May I, may I ask, request the question be asked again, I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, the offices that are here?
Yes.
I know that doesn't really pertain to the data that we're discussing right now, but how do those fit into the overall, because we have a conference room and?
So if you'll, if you'll allow me the opportunity to discuss that at a later time in a more comprehensive discussion, I would, I would appreciate that, but thank you for the question.
All right, any other discussion, any other questions from the commissioners?
I kind of feel like Phil's a techie, so I trust that he's done a good job. It's good stuff.
I feel confident in the decision, and I think you'll be very pleased with the result.
All right, so the action requested here is to direct Town Administrator to execute contract with the AV audio system in focus, and I will open the floor for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item D, Consider Approval of Agreement with Sonatrol Integrated Security to Procure Installation of Security System for Town Hall and the new Public Works Facility. Action requested here is to direct Town Administrator to execute contract. Any additional commentary from you, Ms. Cordero?
Um, I would just like to share that this, as you'll understand from reading the proposal, is essentially video and access control system that will be at both the public works facility and at Town Hall, and it will provide us the ability to get rid of standard keys and go to, you know, the employee's ID card being their key. I think it'll streamline the process, make things more secure, you know, it's a pretty standard solution. Again, we, we went through a very deliberate procurement process. I didn't state the number of bids. In the, in the AV proposal, we received five bids total, and this opportunity, we received seven bids total, and so this was the lowest responsive, responsible bid, and I feel confident in Sonatrol's ability to deliver and meet our objectives.
And this is something you pay a fat fee in, then, monthly monitoring?
The total monitoring fee, off the top of my head, if I recall correctly, is about $2,500 a year, and that includes storage of all the video and 24/7 customer support and active monitoring of the system at both facilities. And we retain ownership of the equipment, we're signing an agreement for two years to have monitored, and so if we're dissatisfied at the end of that term, we can certainly go to a different monitoring service, but the products that they're using are industry standard products that would be compatible with any, any provider that we chose, or we could choose not to monitor it. I thought at the beginning it would be good to have the additional level of customer service and monitoring, and so we can revisit that in the future if necessary.
Any additional questions for Mr. Cordero? All right, hearing none, again, the action requested here is to direct Town Administrator to execute contract. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None. Motion there carries. Move along into reports and other business. I get to go first, and I appreciate Mr. Andrew Smith reminding me that our adult league kickball team, Flower Power, won the adult championship this year against some mighty competition. We actually exacted some revenge on our, on our only loss of the season, and extremely excited about that, so we got some pretty cool t-shirts. I would have liked to have had a big kickball trophy standing right here in front of everyone to put on display, but we don't want shirts for advertising the field, things like that, so very proud of my team for that. And the only other thing that I have is October 9th, we wanted to have a golf tournament, but because of COVID, we had some issues with planning. What this has kind of evolved into is more of a golf fundraiser to support EMS, and that's gonna be at Old Liberty on October 9th, I believe at 10:00 AM is the start time. Was I saying that right? 9:00, 5:00? You have no idea?
I don't know.
Can you, just tell me what the time is?
They're listing starts at 7:00.
That's not what time it says. We'll get that figured out. More details in a while. October 9th, be there, be square. All right, that's all I got. Mr. Cordero, your report, sir.
Thank you, sir. I will add the, the link and sign-up information for the tournament that you just mentioned is on the town's website, on the homepage, so if anybody's interested, they can feel free to go to townofyoungsville.org, and they can find that link and information there. We certainly support our local EMS. Bear with me one moment while I pull up my notes, I do have a handful today, but I'll try to be deliberate about working through them. First, I wanted to just briefly touch on the town's audit results. Specifically, wanted to thank Carrie for her diligence, and Emily as well, the town clerk, for their diligence in working through those audit procedures. We anticipate issuing financial statements next week, so that's excellent, well in advance of the October 31st deadline that the state treasurer sets for municipalities, of which over half do not meet that deadline, so I'm looking forward to that. And then also wanted to just reiterate that the town's fund balance, unappropriated fund balances increased to 70, from 66% of annual general fund expenditures to 78%, so significant increase in fund balance. Cash flows for the town are doing well, and we are ready to facilitate and handle the growth that will continue to come at us. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Angela Harris on her retirement effective November 1st as Franklin County's county manager, and just wanted to let everybody know about that, just in case they didn't see it in today's issue of the Franklin Times. So I just wanted to publicly thank Ms. Harris for her service to the community, and certainly congratulate her and wish her and the family their best as she embarks in her next chapter in life. Wanted to also share that due to some considerations in ensuring that we're diligent about our overtime budgets and salaries budgets, we're actually modifying the hours of Town Hall to be open to the public from 4:30 PM currently to 4:00 PM, and that's just because we've been having issues with getting to the bank and depositing our funds on time, and so as with all things, we're gonna try that out. If we have major issues with customers, we can reevaluate that decision, but just know that town staff are still there until 5:00 PM, and hopefully not soon thereafter, otherwise we have exorbitant overtime expenses, but that we're closing to the public at that time to allow time for them to complete their end-of-day procedures and ensure that cash is deposited in accordance with the relevant general statutes that govern how we collect funds. I wanted to share with the board that we are considering placing the Christmas tree this year next to Benchmark Bank. They very graciously offered that space to us. Variety of considerations went into that, and based on feedback and the idea that as the Christmas tree lighting ceremony especially grows larger, that that space next to the animal hospital won't be sufficient, certainly very grateful for the hospitality they've given us over the years, and then also just that that might be a better location for the Christmas tree to be seen by all as, as an indication and advertisement, if you will, of the reason for the season. So we're, I just wanted to get the board's general feedback on that, and then I also wanted to gauge the board's temperature on having a Christmas parade this year. I have directed staff to continue planning the Christmas parade, and, you know, certainly, again, want to get the board's general feedback on whether you, we should, think we should continue to plan and have that event at this point, or based on information available as of this point, if you feel that we should not plan the event and cancel the event. Certainly, I will say that we reserve the right to change our minds at any point in the future if we receive information that would lead us to modify our decision. So I'll leave it to you, Mr. Mayor, on the Christmas tree and the Christmas parade, and to lead that discussion, and I'll certainly make notes of the feedback that the board has.
Sure, yeah, I'll just kind of open it up for, for discussion, and obviously, I've got my thoughts on it, but I'd like to hear the commissioners' thoughts on it as well, and we'll just kind of discuss it and go from there.
I'll be happy to, sir. I'm a tree-winder, just, just, I share this with Phil. I mean, we won't have the labor this year to serve food, women's club, that, that was our labor force along with T Club. You're not even in existence right now with the schools, so, so don't plan on food of that, I mean, at this point, and plus with all restrictions of food. I know BURB is excited about being on the committee and the loyalty and the parade, et cetera, et cetera. I had some reservations about the parade with everything that's going on, but I think we should still plan it. If someone tells us it's against the law with everything, obviously, we have to reboot or whatever we need to do, but, I mean, I've given it a lot of thought since we, originally, I, I just didn't think it was a very good idea of having a whole bunch of folks right now in confined spaces, especially with the other towns that are not good for it. in confined spaces, especially with the other towns that are not good, i.e. holidaying first. But, you know, still should plan. And if it's safe to do, we should, you know, we should go ahead and do it. Anyway, BURB's going, I'm still going to go to the meetings, but BURB's going to kind of lead some of this stuff. So FYI, I'm very supportive of it overall. Most of the lines folks are supportive of it. There's not to be food. I mean, plus we have a vendor come in and do it professionally. But I suggest we don't have this truck to do it this year.
I was just, I was making a comment about food trucks, I'm sorry. My apologies.
I didn't hear you, so it's all right. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Ritt?
I would like to go ahead with the parade. They're really giving smart choices and sort of pick it up if we need to. And I love the idea of putting the tree somewhere where it's more visible. How would that work as far as having people gather around the tree?
So it's a very good question, what we've initially talked through. And Andrew's very graciously and dutifully offered to help us in our planning efforts. But the concept would be that we would actually close down South College Street in between Main Street and Pine. So that's two blocks of South College. And we would invite potentially some food trucks or other vendors to provide some food options and also allow those business owners to reinvigorate their economic status, if you will. But then we also could use Mitchell Park as a place to, for example, have Santa sit underneath the gazebo. And so that's the general concept at this point, that it would be at the corner in front of the bank, but that the two blocks of South College in between Main Street and the Pine Street, basically where the Bayberry neighborhood begins. And then we'd also close that portion of, I believe it's Oak Street, where the, basically between South College and Holden, that little catty corner street there, we'd close that off too. So that's our plan at this point. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I like that question. It's fantastic.
And I would also encourage people to patronize downtown businesses, which I'm sure they would be very grateful for, especially during that time of season and after going through, you know, the very difficult time that every small business owner has gone through.
Great, I'm going to go back and ask.
I will.
Just one other thing right now, there's a quiet right now at this point. That could change.
Yes, sir.
I know BURB's going to try and find some other option, but right now, those ladies are meeting and practicing.
Sure.
It's a group event, right?
One alternative we've thought of too is using a loudspeaker of some kind to play music and then maybe pass out, you know, a sheet with some carols on it and just sing as a community, maybe for a few minutes. I've thought about that. But there are plenty of things that the committee, I'm sure, will help us decide over the coming months.
I'm glad we talked about getting that. I go to that location of the animal closet, but it's not going to work anymore.
It's just got bigger and bigger.
It's too crowded.
I think it's a good problem to have.
Thank God it wasn't for doing it as much as they, as often as they did.
Commissioner Ritt?
Along the lines of what they're saying, I like all the ideas presented around the tree. I think they're all improvements on what we had already. And I agree that we should move forward, plan a Christmas parade and then the other day, if we need to cancel, we have that option. I say definitely move forward.
All right, thank you for that. And Commissioner Johnson, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you have any thoughts on the parade or the tree lighting, sir?
Thoughts on the parade is I think we move ahead and do it. I think nobody else around us is going to do it. But we've been kind of different to this whole COVID thing, and I don't think this should change. I think we should go ahead and enjoy the holiday spirit, move ahead with it. As far as the tree, a more visible spot is probably better. That's where most people go through is right there at Five Point. You know, a lot of folks don't go down, they don't go east on Main Street. So I think it's a great, if that happens, that's a great thing. If it doesn't, it stays where it's at, it can't be bad either, so.
Understood.
That's my two cents.
All right, well, we appreciate your comments there. And I would kind of echo all the sentiments to this point. Commissioner Helen, I certainly appreciate your comments because I know you're normally the one who spearheads.
I know you're one of the persons.
I know you do. And I know you normally spearhead a lot of this stuff. So I understand for you to have a pause for concern, I can certainly appreciate that, I really can. I think to kind of, to piggyback on what Commissioner Johnson said, you know, we are a little unique and we are different in a stance that we just, we do things the way that we want to do them and we try to do them the right way. And I think proceeding with the Christmas parade is absolutely paramount. It gives people a reason to come and see what we have to offer in our town. It gives people a reason to stop at a local coffee shop or a local bar or a local antique shop and realize that there's small businesses here that they maybe didn't know about unless they're here for that day. It's our biggest day of the year. And I say with a full steam ahead, I never want to have to cancel a Christmas parade. I just don't see the point in doing that. I trust our citizens are smart enough to understand that if they don't feel well or if they're concerned with being out and around other people, then they probably should stay at home. But it shouldn't ruin it for the rest of the folks that want to get out and enjoy Christmas. So those are my two cents. And that, it sounds like we're pretty unanimous on continuing.
Understood. I think that's all I need. Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item. We just wanted to recognize the police department for its efforts to organize a national night out. Unfortunately, due to a variety of concerns, you know, those events are primarily planned and funded by private business enterprises in the community. And the national night out has been canceled. And so kind of in spirit of unity, we're going to go ahead and postpone ours until next year as well. Just wanted to update you on that, but recognize the police department for their efforts regardless. And look forward to doing it next year. I'm sure Chief Whitley will speak to this in greater detail later, but we will be having our Shop With The Cop event on the evening of Tuesday, December 15th. The time is to be determined, however, it will happen in the evening time. But again, that's Tuesday, December 15th. More details to follow on that. Wanted to update the board that the state of North Carolina has graciously, through the federal government, passed $137,496 to the town for coronavirus relief. That, those funds can be used for a variety of different purposes, but we'll be using those to offset overtime expenses and other things in the police department, public safety arena. But certainly that $140,000 grant is much appreciated. Just wanted to update you on that. Also wanted to update you on, and Mr. Smith might speak to some greater detail on this, but the town is proceeding with its plan to purchase a rear loader trash truck. We have found a good piece of equipment that would satisfy our needs when we choose to bring that service in-house. We'll purchase it for approximately $70,000. It's a used piece of equipment, usually they're around $200,000 to $250,000 new. But we're purchasing it from a reputable vendor that is in the region, Carolina Environmental. And we are also looking to purchase a second unit when we can locate one. And then we're also exploring purchasing rollout carts with the town branding on them. So that way we can be prepared to deliver those carts to all of our customers when we eventually decide to bring that service in-house. So just an update there. So if you see Randy and his cohort in a brand-new trash truck driving around town, just know that they didn't, they didn't just take one off the lot. Also wanted to update the board that the town's ABC board has received an offer to purchase the ABC store and property located on the Five Points intersection, just that direction. And will, I expect, authorize the upset bid procedure on a special meeting that's been called for Monday morning at 9:00 AM. If you're interested, just let me know and I can email the details, the calling details to you. Or if you want, you can go to the town website and pull up the agenda, which includes the calling information under the ABC board agenda. But as you're aware, having gone through it with Town Hall property, essentially, we receive an offer. Our current offer is $395,000 for that property. And the upset bid procedure is that we have a 10-day period where individuals are afforded the opportunity to provide additional offers to the town. And each offer has to be at least 5% above. So I believe it's $14,800 if I'm remembering correctly, about 14, you know, sorry, $414,000. $414,000, thank you. $414,800 or approximately $415,000 would be the minimum amount required to upset the current number of $395,000. And at the end of the 10-day period, if we do have a bid that upsets the current bid, we go through the 10-day period again and we continue to go through that process until we have no additional bids. At that point, the ABC board will have the option and authority to either accept the final bid or reject all bids and re-advertise or, you know, do something else that they're choosing with the property. Current kind of thinking with that is that we will lease that current space back from the purchaser for a limited amount of time. And then we'll actually move the store across the street to the Five Point Commons Shopping Center. There's some vacancies there that I think would be a good fit for us. And then also just on the radar is opening up a new location at the Food Lion on Capitol Boulevard. There's some discussions that have happened there and there's some vacancies there that we could take advantage of. And then we're also going to be conducting some interviews next week and in the first week of October for an ABC system manager position that was recently authorized by the board. So that's just a very brief update on the activities that Mr. Hauser and his colleagues on the ABC board have been working on. Capital Projects, quick update. The community building, so this building's renovation of the kitchen will be starting on Monday. That project is anticipated to be complete within three weeks, hopefully sooner. Got a qualified contractor and look forward to those improvements. We're continuing with the install of our wayfinding signs. The Town Hall signs are at the Town Hall building. If you want to swing by and check them out, you can do that whenever you would like. Randy and his team will be installing those soon. We've got a couple of signs for the Five Points intersection. And then the next signs that are going to be worked on are for Luddy Park and Mitchell Park. But we're continuing to get that moving forward. We've got our gates, our new gates completed at Luddy Park. You might notice those as you drive by. We're about a month out from the installation of our basketball lights. And we've got some stairs installed as well. Feel free to take a look at those, the ones that Faith Baptist prepared. And we should have an additional set of stairs soon. Moving on to our Public Works Facility. So in front of you, you've got some additional materials. I believe mine is in the same order as yours, but I'll reference the title of each exhibit. So that way we're on the same page. We've got an admin building renovations site plan first. So if you orient yourself to this site plan. Again, what we're going to be doing is renovating the space that is on the upper third approximately of this building or the, I guess, upper left corner of this as you're looking at it and as you can read it. I'll just draw your attention to the site plan. The main improvements are you can see that there's going to be a concrete walkway that will be extended all the way around the building to the rear or the left-hand side of this diagram. You can see that there is approximate location there on the left-hand side. There's a rectangle there in the kind of top middle section of that concrete path that says approximate location and size of new generator. So we're going to be installing a backup generator for Town Hall, which has been identified as a critical need, especially to ensure that the police department maintains critical capabilities during times of power outage. And then on the top right-hand side of that drawing, you can see essentially what we're going to be doing is paving and leveling the top third of the parking lot. We'll be creating some new spaces. On the top right-hand corner of the building, you can see it says new building entrance. So that will be essentially where that old rollout door is currently and where there's a loading dock. So that will be brought level. There will be a concrete pad put there and maybe a five-foot by 10-foot awning. So that way, if you want to count it outside, or maybe we'll put a picnic table out there or when people are waiting to enter the building, they'll be sheltered from the elements. And then you'll see there's a small little path there as well that extends from that new entrance upward. Any questions on this site plan? So moving to the other side of that sheet of paper. You'll notice on the right-hand side, we've got our meeting chambers, our renovation on that side of the building. So everything that's got your diagonal lines in front of it is just our current facility. I'll draw your attention to, all the way on the left-hand side of the building, you'll notice that there is some area that's not shaded in gray or diagonal lines. And that's because those two offices right there, which are currently cubicalled out, are going to be made into real offices. And then on the right-hand side of the building, you'll notice, so all the way on the left bottom-hand, bottom-left-hand corner, there's going to be a new office created there. And then immediately above that, you'll see there's a wheelchair symbol. That's currently where the police department enters or exits to that section of the building. That'll just going to be vestibule or vacant area. There is another door that will go into another office. That's a bit larger and that is intended to be communal workspace for between four and six employees. So the idea there is to have a communal workspace again. Immediately on top of that, so now we're on the top left corner of the renovated area on the right-hand side of the building, is going to be a smaller conference room. That'll seat approximately 12 to 14 people. And that'll be used for smaller training events or potentially if the board chooses to retreat there for a closed session. Moving into the larger board chambers, we've got your meeting, kind of U-shaped meeting table at the very top of the structure. You'll notice on the wall, there's a TV that'll be a pretty large, approximately 80-inch display that'll be touch-sensitive. So that can be used for the board, but also for training events. Police Department had a specific request for that piece of gear, and I think it will be put to good use. There's room for 16 seated at the front area here. And the tables that are going to be used here are not going to be permanently fixed there. Part of the reason why we've spent a little bit more on AV is that we want this to be fully movable and customizable. And so we'll be using wireless microphones for this area. And then also the tables will be the kind that can kind of fold up and then nest together and be rolled into a corner. So that way that space can be used for a variety of different reasons. I think we've got seating here for approximately 35 persons or 38, I think is what it says here. And then we've got our podium. You see two closets for AV and chair storage. And then we've got wet bar and sink for the lobby, you know, for town training events, things of that nature. We can put refreshments there, that type of thing. And we've got a handicap-accessible restroom in this area as well. You'll notice there's also an additional exit to the building on the top center, approximately. Do I have any questions on this exhibit? All right, moving on to our next. This is just a sectional view of the building. So this is your meeting space. You'll see there's currently some existing air handling and ductwork equipment that's on the top left. So I'm looking at the diagram, which has the woman in a dress at the podium speaking. In the top left, you'll see there's some existing ductwork there, so the ceiling will be a bit lower. I think this drawing has it at eight feet, four inches in height. Then it'll step up to approximately 11 feet. And we'll have two displays, one facing inward, one facing the board. And then you'll have your podium. Just kind of gives you a concept of what the room would look like. And then you've got some additional, you know, sectionals and views there. Any questions on this exhibit? All right. Moving on to our next item, which I believe is our Public Works Facility Design. Public Utility Building is the title. It's a site group drawing. So this is the most updated version. You'll see that South College Street is on the left-hand side of your site plan. We're going to be having an access road built and a driveway built from South College up to the building. Pretty straightforward. I think I've reviewed this with you a number of times. The only, I think, major changes or improvements would be that on the top right-hand side of the building area, on the outside of the building, in the fenced-in yard area, you can see there's kind of a slant or a diagonal edge on the top right of where the border is on the site. That is going to be a wash-down area. So it's going to be a covered wash-down area, so we can wash down vehicles. We've added that. And pretty much everything else remains unchanged. Any questions about this exhibit? All right, moving on to our next page. You've got the interior of the building here. The left two bays, as they're depicted on the diagram, storage bays, just says storage bays. Those are going to be for potential future use to conversion into maintenance space, but we use them for storage at the time being. In the middle of the building, you've got maintenance phase one through three going from right to left. The diagrams you see in the center are the lifts that will have to lift up vehicles for our maintenance. The circular diagrams are your large fan. The circular diagrams are your large fans to circulate air. And then on the two right-hand side portions of the building are going to be a communal workspace area that will have seating for four employees. Potentially we could expand it to more when needed. And then we'll have two restrooms, a shower and a server closet on the top part of that section. On the right-hand side and the upper right, we've got our office for our public work supervisor and we've also got a break room with two tables that can also be used for training as well. Do you have any questions on this exhibit? And on the last page that we've got for consideration here, this is just again some sectionals. It'll show you, and the colored diagram has got basically the extension of the building for the washdown area, as you can see on the kind of bottom left-hand side that makes a little bit of an L shape. And pretty much everything else is self-explanatory. It shows you every side of the building. Do I have any questions on this exhibit? Have I answered your questions, Commissioner Redd?
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, but just want to make sure that you're all well aware of our progress and what our funds are being used for. $2.7 million certainly, I want to, you know, have faith and confidence that we're moving in the right direction. And just provide a brief reminder, we rescheduled our November meeting from November 12th to November 5th, so just a reminder about that. I have sent a calendar invitation, but if you have any questions or reservations, please let me know. And that's all I have, sir. I apologize.
No, no, you're fine. It was great up there. Any questions for Mr. Guerrero before we move forward? All right, hearing none, I'll open it up for the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Redd?
Room clean Saturday, 10:00 AM, meeting at the post office. Volunteers should be turkeys here shortly. Hopefully the weather quality, it's a bad weather state. It'll be done another day. Just actually some questions with the sidewalk project. Is there any movement on that? Kind of along with that, I know we're going to resurface Main Street and as I'm going through Wake Forest, my numbers are looking good, right? A lot of those folks. If the sidewalk thing isn't done, can we go ahead and at least have a Main Street resurfacing? No, any thoughts?
Sure.
I don't know that that makes sense, but...
The decision to separate the project, which I don't think makes sense at this point, would be entirely up to DOT and since they would actually fund 100% of the resurfacing cost for Main Street, the only reason why we're still delayed in, as an update in answer to your initial question, is we have not received any significant updates from Campo or from North Carolina Department of Transportation on that project. So we're kind of still in a holding pattern and because of that, I would say that NC DOT would have no interest in...
Can I just add one point?
Yes, sir.
When we really think about it, does DOT, are they contributing any money to this project? I know it's a federal program, right?
It is a federal project, yes. So the short answer is no and they're actually making out better because there are a variety of costs that have to do with construction administration that the federal government or Federal Highways Administration is actually paying for, that DOT would otherwise have to pay for if the project was proceeding separately, which is DOT's responsibility. So yes, they are benefiting from combining the project with the federal project.
But DOT isn't kicking in any money, right?
They are kicking in approximately $140,000 for the resurfacing.
All right, that's what I was going to...
Yes, sir.
They're not giving any funding.
No, they are. They are.
But part of the issue was they didn't have enough money to pay out even though the budget was going well.
That's right.
They never had a limit, they didn't have money.
That's right.
And I know there was a lot of restrictions and nothing happening.
Right. We're still fine as far as that's concerned. We've received construction authorization. Our funding is still solid from the federal perspective. The state budget is just a question at this point. Certainly if you want to contact our representative on the State Transportation Board, that won't hurt. I've done it many times. But the more she hears...
I'm trying to...
Yes, sir.
I'm interested in trust me. Any other thoughts or is it even realistic, you know, on a truck route? I know we've talked about that a little bit. Is that even realistic, do you think?
I think it's...
I think there's no set answer to that.
I think it's realistic when the development permits it. Doing it on our own at this point would certainly not be feasible. I do think it's a great idea and DOT actually is very receptive to the idea of designating an alternate route and/or moving NC 96. And instead of NC 96 being Main Street, it would be this potential future road and then we would essentially take ownership of Main Street and, you know, we wouldn't have all that truck traffic. So they've expressed interest in that. So I think as development continues and DOT begins to get its feet underneath it from a cash management perspective, continuing those conversations is beneficial.
All right. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Heaven. Commissioner Redd? All right. Commissioner Redd?
I don't have anything.
All right, Commissioner Johnson, you still with us? One once, go on twice.
Yes, I'm here. I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, moving along into planning and zoning. Is Ms. Klinger still with us?
Ms. Klinger?
I am.
Do you have any updates?
So, yeah, so last month, we had 16 permit applications submitted and issued, five for food trucks, four for new homes, two for size and five for other projects. Thirteen certificates of compliance were issued. Over 14 illegal signs were immediately removed by town staff during sign sweep. Four notices of violation were mailed for illegal signs. Two of the signs were removed by business owners and the other two were removed by town staff and invoices will be sent to the companies for the violations. Youngsville Academy has submitted an application to rezone a parcel of land across from their existing location to civics so that they can locate their new high school on this parcel. That will go before the planning board next month and then proceed to the commissioners' meeting in November. Youngsville Storage has submitted a petition to close portions of Hillsborough Street and Trocaden Road around their existing facilities so that they can expand. The date of the public hearing will be set at next month's meeting. I am also working on research for a text amendment to our food truck regulations so they're not quite as restrictive on the number of days that a food truck may operate. And last but not least, we still have two planning board vacancies. And that is all.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for Ms. Klinger? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into town attorney, Mr. Cohen.
Nothing to report from me.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving along, Chief Wood, what you got for us?
Yes, sir. Calls for service this month, we filled a 389 calls for service. There's only 16 reports taken, so there's only 16 incidents requiring actual police investigation. Of those 389 calls, we had no critical incidents I'm happy to report. Motor vehicle collisions, we had two minor injuries as a result of a motor vehicle collision in town. Some patrol operations for this month, officers were focused around Camille Circle and Blue Herring Drive as well as North Cross Street and East Franklin Street, and that was a result of several citizen complaints about folks not stopping for stop signs and then some construction traffic around Blue Herring as well. Kind of to the point that Ms. Buddy made earlier, officers issued eight citations and 13 good warnings just at Franklin and Cross along this month. And we had no enforcement action at Camille Circle. It's sort of a, or Camille Drive is sort of an interesting intersection right there and it's wide open and it's very difficult for the officers to get in a position to take enforcement action, which is fine because their visibility reduced the instances of both around the stop signs and some construction traffic there was redirected, so... Community police in efforts, upcoming community police in efforts who are having a drug take-back event on October 24th. That'll be right here at Town Hall, right at the Town Hall between 1:00 PM and 4:00 PM. And this gives citizens or anyone interested within the county an opportunity to bring prescription drugs to the police department, drop them off, no questions asked, get rid of them. And it really helps to prevent drug diversion among our youth because most of the time opioids and things like that are obtained from adults. The prescriptions run out and we've long forgotten that they were in the medicine can. So it's a great way to divert those narcotics places that they can be safely disposed of. As was mentioned earlier, we still intend, and we are beyond that, we're committed to the SHOP public event this year. I don't know exactly what this will look like considering the constraints. We may not be able to have the families out and all together if it comes to it. I have told our officers, we'll take wish lists from the children, purchase those gifts, have a gift wrapping party with officers and we'll go around and deliver them ourselves if that's what it comes to. We can do that. My final item here, I'm proud to say, we have, we're beginning a pilot program for a cadet program for the agency. And what that looks like is we've already advertised and we have a tremendous amount of interest in folks that are interested in attending BLET and becoming a Youngsville Police Department officer. A lot of the folks that have applied, quite frankly, don't have means to put themselves through BLET, so I think it's going to be a great program. We're looking to have 10 cadets. Of that will end up picking two cadets that will take on somewhere from six to eight weeks prior to BLET. They'll be in the paid intern capacity with the department where they get shadowed some of our senior officers, be around administrative capacity. It'll be a great time of the year because it'll be when we are having some of these community events around holidays. Those BLET starts the first of the year, so it'd be a great time to get them acclimated to the police department and bring them on to our team before we send them through a cadet program. That's all I have.
That's outstanding. Outstanding. Any questions from the commissioners for Chief Woodley? All right, thank you, sir. Hearing none, I'll move over into Fire Department report from Assistant Chief Green. Looks like they've had a 13% decrease in calls year over 2019 to 2020. Obviously, I think that can be attributed to COVID-19 and people not getting out about as much. But his actual updates here state that Youngsville Fire Department continues internal response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Youngsville Fire Department personnel is required to wear masks whenever they cannot socially distance, anytime that they are in public and on all incidents. Access to the fire station has been restricted to only the personnel working on ship. Volunteers that respond from home are secluded to the bay. Any personnel that have any symptoms of illness or have family members that are sick are placed on leave until the symptoms resolve. Franklin County screening calls and if COVID-19 is suspected, they will not dispatch the Fire Department to reduce exposures. Youngsville Fire Department has completed a comprehensive continuity of operations plan for a variety of different worst-case scenarios to ensure continued delivery of service in the Youngsville Fire District. Training and meetings have moved to a virtual format for all personnel and is currently, the YFT is currently not doing any special event participation. So another one of the updates here is the Youngsville Fire Department participated in a child cancer survival celebration parade at Faith Baptist Church on August 22nd. He says thanks to the Youngsville Police Department for their participation. The child's father is a Durham police detective and the law enforcement participation meant a lot to him. And as far as Christmas parade planning goes, Chief Rich with the Fire Department is going to be the point of contact there. That is it from Assistant Fire Chief Justin Green. Moving along into parks and recreation, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I would echo the golf event on October 9th. It's for a good cause. Some good plans going on. I think it'll be a lot of fun. It'll definitely be a lot bigger next year as the department has to have two golf events next year, one for Parks and Rec and one for EMS as well. So local springboard is a good springboard as well. Baseball practices are up this week and games start next week. Really excited about that. Get jerseys this week and very happy about those turning up this year. We've got a team's football softball that starts in two weeks with games, so we'll have the golf going softball for the first time coming in two weeks. Our class registration opens on Monday. Those are interested about this at class time, there's a band and pumpkin garden event and a painting of pumpkin rockets and then there's models of cats, witches and a comic house that'll be available as well. You can see example, one's in his office, it's a fun painting to your time. Also, we'll be having a juggling club now. Maybe someone approached us, he has over 30 years of juggling experience. It'll also be our first creed that we are doing. It'll be once a week. We started at Mitchell Park, we'll try to get people there and then move to the outdoor basketball courts when it starts getting colder earlier. So if you want to try that and explore your brain, you know, we're all about, we'll try something. The first part of the cement for the light supply, I actually put it today. It's a progress to be there. And as Mr. Guerrero said, the pigs went in middle of last week there. Days are being locked at night thanks to the police department, so if you're trying to get in after 10:30 to 11 o'clock, you're not going to be able to. And they are open more or less at 7:00 or 8:00. Other than that, that is a lock.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into Town Clerk Tax Collector, Ms. Erb.
I have nothing.
All right. Finally, we'll wrap up with maintenance and Mr. Smith, what you got?
As we've already heard, we've got a lot of profit. Erb involved in flooding the pool because it can be a handy man to give you a problem. Water tanks will be doing problems with our apartment, putting everything out of the cabinets, placing the water tank slot. If anybody has any items that might be here, they'll be rolled in on the tables probably next week. We'll be letting as far as cap and full. So at that point, that will be before we move this one. Expectation, I have no question about doing it that way. So local sports next will be, that is going to be done. Also, we have a smaller dedication in the bathroom. It'll be an additional, we've already done, place the storage unit to house that appears there, not visible. We're working on that project. As you're seeing, expecting the first sign, it's been ready to do a sign that's been done. We've got two more signs to do this fall. As we're doing this, we're going to be doing upgrades to the landscape area, adding mulch and some debris in homes. We've been spraying pretty frequently, killing some of the grass in the land areas. That's going to be upgraded to a mulch around railroad tracks. We should be getting that in the next week. We can add that done with fresh mulch and plant beds around where the railroad tracks all four sides. Next stage will lead to some cemetery that's finished with a bench. We're going to move into the park and trucks, we'll work around there with truck work and truck work and hanging of the zebra. We want to try to add that done regularly by time of new decoration and lighting, so that actually is probably going to be worth the investment. And we'll start by actually doing these renovations. So that's the first project. We'll do all the tasks. Other than that, as Phil said, we'll be doing, you know, guys who are worse, providing the yard for us, so we'll be invited to the Fisher's Day operated.
Give you some brief minorization training with the cart tipper device?
Oh, and one other thing, Commissioner Heaven, you spoke about the dead man's purpose. We have been in constant contact with DOT. They may force you out of the day. I did get a return call back from a gentleman. They are looking forward to see what all can be done, proper installation. It's been two months since you asked that question. I think we're about to pay to do it ourselves and build. We're all hoping that's going. But Chief Wood and ourselves, as well as Phil, has been involved with management amongst ourselves. We have a plan, but we're waiting for the... in the management of amongst our bills, we have a plan, but we're waiting to see the bylaws that both the doctors and the people back there.
Thank you. All right, sounds good. Any questions for Maynes? All right, hearing none. Move along. Next item is closed session. There's plenty of going for closed session. So the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I have any motion to adjourn? Push it to me. Second. And we've got a second. I don't know why it took so long. Is there any discussion, any discussion prior to that? Hearing none, all in favor? And hopefully none opposed? I don't know, he may be all of a sudden. All right, medium.